I make a blonde to go gray. Not by my choice. I would just go. I seen now this husband that... He means the transition time?
He didn't want you gray yet, is that?
Yeah, he thinks people will know that I'm nine years old or they already do.
What?
We all have our things.
You live the man's life. Good timing. It's strategic, I think it is. That's me playing the recording of this.
Ready?
We are live, yep.
Call anything to order, please join me in the flagellations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see everyone.
Start the new year, right?
Excuse me, approval of the agenda consent agenda is needed. So, second. Any other discussion? Call a favor with sign of aye?
Aye!
Any opposed? Same sign? Thank you. And Sherry can't be listed today. Any comments from the... We have the donation report.
We had a few donations that came through. You can see those items listed there. When you're in the agenda. As you know, from time to time, they're targeted for specific millions or in some cases will have anonymous ones. And in each case, we're always very grateful for those. And so, we'd be happy to entertain any questions. But again, we say it each month and it's true. Each month, we're very blessed to have a community that wraps a lot of care around our kids. And so, thank you to everyone of our groups out there for investing in our kids the way that they do.
Absolutely. I didn't think about this earlier, but there was one that, for Washington, the negative lunch balance. It'd probably be good for the board to have an update on where we're at. And since we're halfway through the year on our buildings with those negative balances. For those of the communities aware of those needs.
We have a variety of entities that are interested and may contribute into those. So, I'll work with our team to get that.
I agree. The donations, yes. Any sense, there's no questions? We need a motion on the... On the donations. So moved. Second? Any other discussion? Call in favors, say aye? Any opposed? Same sign? Thank you again to all the generous donations. Continue to do the work that we... Need approval. Yes, we did make a consent, so there's nothing... Okay, superintendent's report.
I'll update you on a few things. The heat wave came through the last couple of weeks. So, we've had, well, I guess it's just now come. It was my favorite question from my seven-year-olds on Tuesday last week was about just, I mean, the sun had just come up. And I said, and they said, can we go out and play in the snow? And I said, go ask Siri what the temperature is. And if it's 10 or more, we'll consider it. And they came back and said, it's negative 30. I was like, I'm going out. But obviously, on this side, when we have those things, there's a couple of different things to just really update you about. One of them is the most, you know, from a compliance perspective is... And we have some people that are, this is now one full year on the board. So, you've encountered this at least one other time or in some cases it's multiple times. But just as a reminder for you as a board, we by Kansas statute, systems count the number of hours. They actually used to count just days. And it was 180.
Yeah.
And then they transitioned to counting hours. And actually, systems can actually still choose to count days if they want to. I don't know many systems that are out there that do. But you have to meet a minimum threshold for K through juniors of 1116 and 1085 for our seniors. They're pretending to be six. Ultimately, what that boils down to is when, anytime I talk about, anytime any one of us references the 1116 count, we're referring to where, as we've had these snow days, are we in jeopardy of having to hit that concern where we might have to make up time? And for the sake right now, just for your knowledge is no, we don't. We have used two inclement weather days. And in each of our buildings, we have for at least one more snow day. Every one of our buildings and our middle schools and elementaries each have two. So, just to let you know or kind of share with you just as a reminder on that. Number one, safety is always the first decision that comes to that. So, last year, we had, I think the high school had to make up some time last year, had to adjust the schedule to get to their 1116 and their 1086. If we have to call school due to inclement weather, we do that. And then we just have to adjust accordingly. Absolute worst case in the state of Kansas and anywhere else presumably, but the state of Kansas, if you absolutely had to. And there's been people that have had to come back after Memorial Day to finish out their days. We've not, I've not experienced that and don't plan to experience that, but I just wanted to keep you updated on that. Mr. Rhodes works with our principals and to make sure that they get those. Is there anything you want to add related to the 1116 count?
No, I think we're, I mean, having a couple of snow days, we're still in good shape in the event that we've got another day or two where we need to be out at this point. So, yeah.
Okay. Any questions about that?
Not a question, but I just want to acknowledge our maintenance team in the middle of all that. Now, it's not the same, but it's when you're making those decisions. So, they did a fabulous job under the circumstances.
You know, some of the time, and that's what we're seeing it out here still. And I say we, but I mean, the whole community is seeing that where we just haven't been able to thaw out yet. And that's kind of been unique about this year. And basically a year ago, that Arctic air just has come in. And you know, sometimes we'll get good Kansas snow and then three days later, the sun's come on. It's just, it just turns into a muddy mess. But we have been very impressed with our maintenance crew and really our community crews as well. I know they don't get enough, thank you, so appreciate that. I also shared with you all and I'll continue to share an update. I wanted to talk a little bit and try to answer the questions that I could about Power School being compromised. So, what does that mean? Well, what it means is, so we utilize as our student information system, we use Power School. There are other districts and there's numerous districts in Kansas that use Power School. The other one that most other Kansas school districts, if you're not using Power School, they will use a program called Skyward. But really between those two, that's the vast majority of Kansas. Power School is actually an international company. So, they support K-12, not just in the United States, but Canada and parts of Europe. And what occurred when their system got compromised is worth noting a small distinction between the compromise hack that occurred is their... So, their servers were, it wasn't like an outside entity just was lobbying attacks on their servers and somehow broke into them. What occurred is there's specific users across Power School that have maintenance level access, which is high-level network access to ensure that any system upgrades or system bugs, that they can open these windows that then other client, then people with other customers can then access and make sure their updates occur. What my understanding is, one of those level of users had kept their credentials open for some amount of time. And it was through that pathway that the hackers were able to gain access to Power School. So, really, once they gained access under that user, then they could create their own code, which they did, and started to run this protocol across their entire system, which they did, and collected data for over three days. Here's what happened roughly around December 22nd, is my understanding through just during that, well, during the three days leading up to Christmas. And then it was identified that a hack had occurred. The, for all of the people, which is, I'm going to say confidently millions of people, but I would think even more than that, potentially hundreds of millions, of the accounts that were impacted, the vast majority were, is direct directory information. Much of the same information that could be publicly found anywhere. Meaning Shiloh Manson address, phone number, those things that are publicly available. In Power School, some of the clients or some of the customers did have student information like social security numbers or student identification numbers that were also accessed. What we do not know for McPherson yet is whether we were, number one, whether we were a system that had that occur because some systems haven't. So, some systems as a part of Power School, for whatever reason, the protocol hadn't hit them yet. And so, they, or certain aspects of it had. So, they had collected names, they had collected whatever it was. They hadn't gotten other information. Some of it... See what else? And then, of course, some people have and they just haven't been notified yet. The, really that type of level of information, we don't actually have in our student information system because social security stopped being used, I'm going to say around 2005, 2006. So, that info for McPherson, if that occurred, those people who would be impacted would likely be only those who were past students of ours and during the timeframe pre-dating 2005. We've had Power School for about, since 2004. Here's what I will tell you. I can't tell you anything about how it's impacted our system directly because we haven't heard directly from Power School about that yet. But here's the timeframe that they tell us that we will learn something. That January 17th through the 24th, at some point in there, that's the window that they're letting the systems know that they, we will get a specific detailed list of what has occurred. The most important thing that I think people would worry about, and I know you would too, is how do we make any kind of, what communication needs to go out to the individuals? And how can anything be corrected? Right now, number one, Power School would be the ones who would make those, would communicate that information out. Obviously, we've communicated already out to our, paid to all of our students and staff and families, letting them know that this has occurred. And once we learn more, whatever's needed to communicate out just broadly, we'll share. But when it comes down to any specific sensitive information, Power School will be connecting with those individuals directly. And as a resource, my understanding is, as a resource for those who were impacted, Power School, it's my understanding that they will pay for credit monitoring for those individuals who were impacted. Meaning that that way, if Shiloh's information was a part of it and they would, number one, notify me that that's occurred. And number two, they would provide coverage for me to monitor whether my information is being used outside of the way that it should be used. I'll stop there. There's a lot of interesting things to this. Well, let me name one thing that's just, I found to be very interesting. These types of cyber attacks, it seems, is though what they, what I have, without a good way to create an analogy, what I've described it as is they'll gain access and they'll collect all this information. And then the purpose of the attack is to then, let's say, hold hostage the company for ransom.
Yeah.
And my understanding is that's exactly what occurred in this. And my also understanding, which this is an interesting world that we live in, where there is, seems to be some certainty and some reassurance that there was a brokering back and forth and a pigment was issued to these individuals who attacked this. And that the result of that was that they got essentially this ransom that was requested and deleted or demonstrated a verification of the material that had been collected over that three-day period has now been destroyed. Now, I've talked to some people and they said, well, you take a hacker's word for it, who broke into your system and stole all that information? I don't know. That's way, way, way above me, particularly in us in this system. Here's what I can tell you, just as a recap, is this did not occur within our school system. It did, well, let me restate that. It's not like the hack occurred starting in USD 418. This was, this occurred, to my knowledge, outside of Kansas. But it did impact us. We will learn between Friday and, Friday this week and Friday of next week, to what extent it impacted us. And once I do, then I'll communicate with the board, obviously, to let you, make you aware of it. And then we'll work with Power School to make that known to all parties impacted. Let me just stop there and answer any questions that you might have.
This happened over Christian spring, then?
The window, my understanding, the window occurred for this timeframe that this was open was just before the holidays. And it ran for three full days before their system or before individuals know somehow was identified.
It really didn't affect the operation of our school district.
It honestly has not affected the operation of our school district and even for that matter, within our student information system at all. I mean, the one, when they reassured that that, once it was shut down, once they shut it down, it was no longer collecting information. And it was no longer, and once the window was closed, there was no, it was secured. It was that it had been gained through this account user level that is really what allowed it to the vulnerability.
So, we're back using it now?
We never really, I mean, yeah. You know, so we take attendance and, yeah, we have not stopped using it. Now, what, I mean, likely people can expect, even if parents and families, but we'll communicate this out once we have a final word. It's when we're looking at things like, the next time you try to log in, you might have to reset your password. The thing about student and parent, and for that matter, any kind of login for it is encrypted in addition to, so I mean, passwords and logins, that information, to my understanding, was not collected because it could not be collected. So, that's a positive. But for the sake of an abundance of caution, we'll likely just ask for it. And we can do that as a default within our system. So, we can do that overnight. And then the next time I try to log into Power School, it'll prompt me to follow the, like I did the first time I logged in. And in the same way, we are anticipating for students and families. Good question.
What's our insurance company saying about coverage with a cyber?
Don't have that answer right now, but...
That would be helpful for us to know what that looks like. I think we have to, it's not a part of our insurance, if I'm not mistaken. But I don't know what the coverage helps us.
Just keep an eye out. I'll push that out on my weekly report. Thank you for that question. Other questions? It's a unique world that we live in. I don't know how you are, but I'll get a letter in the mail that says my information was hacked as a part of this thing or a part of that thing. So, it's this unique world that we live in where it seems like these kind of things occur, feels like all the time. But yet, there is some level of security and some level of needing, expecting, I think, to be able to have some sensitive information. I'll be somehow captured by others. And so, it's just this, it's a unique challenge. And to that point, that's, I'll clarify what kind of coverage we have. But that's absolutely the types of world that we now live in where cybersecurity and cyber coverage is the thing we have to be careful about.
You know, it's not a question, but this just happened to our family from an insurance company. And it took me about 10 or 15 minutes per family member to get the credit monitoring and the product, they called it. They came with the breach. And so, I'm related to this, but just went through this. So, and then they monitor it for a year and they help if some things identified that came out of that.
True. Well, more to come. The positive on that in terms of, like I said, social security numbers, that's not been something that could even be captured in the system for a number of years. But as I learn more, I'll keep you posted. And then the final item, also now, just an update. So, we, as we know, as we think about just enrollment conversations and staffing conversations, I will be, Mr. Rhodes will be working to provide a staffing update that we will share, or staffing report that I'll share out for board's review. And then we can have discussion on it. There's two reports that we do for FTE. We do it for enrollment at the beginning of the year. It's the superintendent organization Form 66, always called SO 66. We do our enrollment data and we do all of our licensed personnel and non-licensed personnel in addition to a variety of other things. Anything you want to know about Kansas schools, Perry know that well, the SO 66 form captures that. What the licensed or LPR report, licensed personnel report captures is actual verification of positions and things like that. That is what Mr. Rhodes will be working on over the course of the next several weeks. And so, just keep an eye out for those finalized numbers. I'll share that and we can have dialogue around just staffing and staffing trends over time in addition to enrollment, in addition to what we've already talked about, which was enrollment trends. Other than those items, that is all that I have.
The state audit, I know, happened before Christmas. Have you got results on that?
We have not. Here's, but thank you for asking that because I did want to share. We have had, we have not had our audit report done. And I want to be very careful. I don't want it to come across like I'm being critical of KSDE or the people who have conducted it. So, we've had initial feedback that we provided that shows that everything was good. It's not that. I believe that there must be a backlog of something that was occurring. But actually, to give you, to honest, to be clear, I will have to look back, but I believe we actually had that in October, at the very end of October or very end of November. So, we, it was early for us for a reason. So, as I learn more on that, you, again, once I get the final report on the audit report, two things will happen. I'll absolutely share that out and we can have discussion around that. There's, what the KSDE audit is looking at is, are our kids in the classes that we say that they're in? Are they counting the CTE credits the way that they are? Do we have, what's our total FTE? There's always an adjusted amount. If we use just a flat number, if our FTE that we report is 2,000 kids, then the audit comes in and says, okay, well, you know, now that we know what their actual schedule is and some adjustments are made and busing transportation isn't really picking them up from this point and taking them to that point, all of the adjustments occur. You might adjust down 6 FTE or adjust up 4.3 weighted FTE. So, that's the type of information that we're getting, we're seeking to get. But ultimately, what it identifies for us is what's our, what's our anticipated legal maximum authority for spending at the end of the year? So, once we get that report, you'll have that report.
It's always so nice that if our numbers go up, we don't get anymore of our published max. If our numbers go down...
We'll make sure we adjust that.
Take this down.
It's too bad, it's kind of interesting, however. But I say that, and again, I want to be clear. I'm not, don't want to fault anybody at KSDE, but I know you're eager to see it as well as we are. So, audit report, final one will be coming. And again, that's what the, what they're auditing really is to make sure what your FTE, among other things. Again, that's all I had. Thank you all so much. And no, no, that's not all that I have. Happy Board Recognition Month. We are blessed in McPherson to have each one of you here. And we mean that sincerely. And we cannot thank you enough for the time that you pour in to this process. So, thank you. On behalf of just our system, we have created a, just a nice, I don't know, placard that you can put up there. So, on, just on behalf of USD 418, thank you. We hope that you'll know that you're appreciated and it'll be a reminder when you see it each day. You also have some very, we had some very kind elementary school students who drafted some thank you letters to you. And so, those are sitting there for you to see this as well. And then over the course of this month, we'll be sharing out pictures and some snapshot stuff of you guys. So, you know, something I've learned and I've told many people about it. They say, what's one of the biggest surprises that you have when you become the superintendent? And I said, I think the, one of the biggest surprises for me is that just how blessed all systems are to have volunteers willing to pour in the amount of time. Because everybody thinks you can be in here. And this is the meeting that you have. meeting that you have. And we meet once a month and then they don't know that you have committee work, you have board officer meetings, we have multiple things that you do. You get phone calls in the middle of the night from me talking about a variety of different things. So just know that you're appreciated. Happy Board Education, State, Happy Board of Education Month. That's all I have.
Thank you. Just, yeah, it's great to work with everyone. So I echo the great drawings and words from our students. That's really nice also. I have on mine a future board member, who true they're, that they're going to be here. So that's what I'm looking forward to. Great. So we'll move on to strategic planning.
This Thursday, just a reminder, and actually we'll, we'll ask for a motion, just to really formalize it. But just as a reminder, kind of where we were last fall and kind of where we've been and now where we're at, where we're going, we have some, some exciting couple of days sessions coming up this month. And our first one is on Thursday, just as a reminder for, for you all, we sent that out and we have invited stakeholders from across the community, staff, certainly board, administration. And we are hoping, although some people did RSVP and say they could, you know, might be a little bit late to one or may not for sure be able, our goal is to try to capture, or our goal was to have those same groups be here on the 16th as well as on this, the 27th. And I believe at our last count with all members combined, we had 65 individuals. That would include you and our team who hit RSVP PS, or a number that RSVP'd now. And there were some who we hadn't heard back from. That number could be up to as high as seven. Awesome. Awesome. I mean, I think if we can, it'll be fun to get that dialogue going. Just as, as kind of a reminder on that, Dr. Hart will be with us, both of those, and he'll facilitate that. I'll welcome the group and, and then we'll jump right in. We have those slated to be, here I show two hours and 15 minutes. I think that's more for your planning. We have, in how he's planned it, I think we're looking at 90 minutes. So he'll, and we'll engage with them. Those are at the McPherson Community Building and they are, both of them will start at six o'clock. Then, let me name where we go from there. So we'll collect the feedback. We'll have awesome, great dialogue with, with our community and our focus groups. And then after the meeting on the 27th, Dr. Hart will work together and kind of pull together all of the feedback that we've collected. And then board officers and our admin team will first take a look at that and try to wrestle with this, what I anticipate to be a lot, magnitude of information. And then with the plan that I bring that to the, to the board at the work session in on February 24th. So really, for your sake, just be prepared. And I know some of you have other commitments and may not be at each of those focus sessions on the 16th through the 27th, but our target remains those, those sessions, February, be able to really work then as a board during the work session to finalize that, wrestle that. And then we'll use where we're at to determine where are we at on March, April 4th and accept approve in this process. Exciting stuff. And we're just, thank you to each of you in advance. And thank you also in advance to all of our, our folks out there. It was very positive and people, those, those that weren't able to come were obviously a person of the opportunity to be invited, but they just had other commitments. And so what we would be asking though, just to make sure that we formalize this, what I, what I would request is that a motion to set those two special meetings for January 16th and January 27th, beginning at 6:00 PM at the McPherson Community Building each of those nights. If we can do that, I just would.
I'll move to set two special board meetings for January 16th, 25 and January 27th, 25, beginning at 6:00 PM at McPherson Community Building on each of those dates.
Sure.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign?
And just to kind of go a little bit further with the timeline, if we feel like we need more time, we'll take more time. Okay.
Yeah. And that's actually kind of what, thank you for posting it that way. Let me be clear, if we're not ready for March, April, if it has to be changed, why, we will allow, we're not locked into, you know, blinders on and have to trust you.
A comment, it's just the response that we've gotten from our community to take time out of their lives to come and support this is just exciting. And then I think our session that we had in which saw together the synergy that we saw. And so, you know, it is an exciting venture that I am pleased and delighted. I didn't think I would be, but it's like turning out to be, I think that a lot of good, good things are going to come out of this for our district.
Did you have any turn downs?
You know, I didn't capture a percentage, although I'd be happy to. I mean, I would say more, I would say it was probably closer to two to one would be my guess. I mean, two saying yes and, or I would actually rather say two thirds said yes and a third weren't able to, or didn't respond. So, yeah, I mean, and those that, I mean, it's a busy time of life for people, right? I mean, we knew a Thursday to Monday, that was our best opportunity, but, you know, we have wrestling families out there, we have basketball families out there, you know, so you're not going to get everyone, but yeah, in general.
So you could have 30, 40 people there.
Yeah, I would say right at 40 just community members and then another 20, 30, including the rest of the system.
That's great.
That's great.
Thank you. Okay, new business, 6.1, the MCC handbook.
You ready?
Sure.
I will invite Ms. Randy Martinez-McWilliams up. This has been, and well, I was gonna say it was an undertaking, but this was kind of really a revision slash update. So I'll let her tell you how much of a...
I don't need you to say this.
Honestly, as long as you speak loudly.
I can do that.
It is this mic.
Okay. Okay. Um, yeah, this has been a work in progress. So, I mean, the board helped approve the first one, the first version that we had about six years ago. And so that was our process that we put in place of really class adoption. If there's changes in, you know, credit recover, or credits for high school or additions, deletions, those kinds of things primarily happens at the high school, a little bit at the middle school, not much to do with the elementary, but, but you do have a system in place in case there was something. So we meet monthly. It's really busy around this time, December time, because that's when we usually get a lot of approvals for class additions. And I've been really impressed with this group. I've kept most of them for the last six years. There is a rotation of some of them that come off and, you know, and then we replace, but there's actually 25, 26 members and that includes some parents. So we probably get around 18 to 20 that consistently show up around. And so we get a lot of input and perspectives and that's really great because it gets them thinking about whether other questions they might have if they want a class addition or deletion, you know, if we were to delete this, then what are the pros and cons? And I think from the beginning of kind of training them up to look at our systems and, and our goals to where we are now, they ask really good questions. I, you're there, you, you see that. And we just had one and it was like, wow, this is why this team exists. So, and it's really just, I encourage them to look at what's best for kids. Cause sometimes we will get things that come before us that we're really excited about, but it may not be a fit for our system and it may not be what's best for kids. And so we really push to ask those questions. So what we did is we had that adopted about six years ago and then through just the process of adding and having discussions, there were some things that came up that really just didn't work. So an example would be, we had a strict rotation of people coming off and coming on, but that really didn't work well because we have teachers that would come and go and that got messy. And so it was like, if they still are committed to being on there, we want them to stay on there. And plus then they bring that wisdom and they're having to be retrained constantly. So that was something that changed. There was just some things that like agendas, when we were getting them pushed out based off of information that we're waiting on. So just little things, it's not a total revamp, but it was just really stuff that I got from our MCC members as feedback as we went along and decided that we needed to change and polish up a little bit. And I mean, really that's the way all of our system stuff should be. You know, we adopt something and then it shouldn't be stagnant. We should constantly be looking to do better. So that's what that version is right there. And I'm sure that we'll be going through it another couple of years and deciding things that need to be looked at differently again. So if you go all the way to the end, if the document, one of the things that I think is pretty cool and it's just unique to us is, so you have all of the drafts there. But yeah, those links right there. So you can see that that's a lot of the curriculum work that's been done. So those specific rubrics that you guys see when we ask for approvals are all attached there. Those are specific to McPherson based off of our needs and the research that we've done. So it's kind of cool that those are already made. That doesn't mean that those won't change sometime too, but those are there. Before, when we first started, there was only one general one, but now we have them for each content. And then just the documents, we've made them all digital and it's also in our Drive Digital. So we didn't have so much paper coming through and they could just fill it out and then it notifies me and I know to look at it. So I think it was, it's a little more with the times. But just a kudos goes out to the MCC because I did not do this by myself. This was our members working on it all last year, pretty much in groups. So they each had a section and they worked through that section and then gave me the feedback. And then, you know, I was like, okay, it'll be done after that. No. Then we looked at it again and then we looked at it again. So I'm just proud of that team for really digging in and doing what's best for the system and did not take a lazy way out at all. And a lot of work went into even just updating it. So that's what that version is. Not much different from the first one, just updated to really how we're functioning and how we see ourselves as a system working. Any questions?
Yeah, I was just going to capture kind of real quick that we, we always love our acronyms in education. So the MCC is the McPherson Curriculum Council. So we all know that, but the, again, the goal there, the rationale right there is to just develop a broad-based ownership and support for curriculum study and development. And I would just name, just kind of share with the board that Mrs. Martinez-McWilliams, in addition to that team with MCC, this is the type of system and process that she's been able through her leadership to put into place. And we, and it serves as a model for, at least personally countless people around the state who have reached out and specifically want to know about our process and specifically want to know about this, this type of a manual. So just sharing with you as a board that your leadership, Mrs. Martinez-McWilliams on this and that team's work on it extends far beyond just McPherson. And you know that, but it's good to be reminded of that. So thank you to you and thank you to our MCC members.
Yeah, they're dedicated, that's for sure.
This is something that has to be updated. Well, we take a look at it obviously, but I assume annually, but is this, is this one of our plans that requires like KSTE?
No, you do have that PDC document, which is, but MCC isn't really, it's just a, something that we got back from that study, well, way back, we won't go way back, way, way back, but we used to have something like this in the system before. I think it was called the CCC back then. And then, and then we had something that was kind of loose and, and it wasn't embedded in our system. So when we, we brought this back. And so, no, it's more just for our system checks and balances. But like you said, some people ask for it for different things, but yeah, I mean, be happy to share with the state, but it's not required. It's just something that we have.
I had a question. In looking through this, I didn't see anything about a procedure if a parent objects to one of the textbooks. I assume we have another board policy about that?
Yep. My follow, we do have policy about that on the website, which is just in our, on our board docs. And so I just follow that. So yeah, that would come up. I think if, if a parent objects to that, well, it could be handled at the classroom level, first of all. So that happened to me when I was in the classroom, a parent wanted to read a different, have the child read a different book. Fine. That was just something that we gave them a different opportunity. If it goes beyond that, then it actually calls for a committee to be formed and study the book. So.
Have we had much of that?
No. And a lot of it is because we got a strong curriculum adoption and I think we've got a good, just a good balance and a lot of perspectives, a lot of input. So yeah, I think that's because of all the leadership around. It's not just letting any book get in, you know, kind of thing. It's really thoughtful about it.
Yeah, I would tell you all that since I sit on that one right now, we get a lot of information before the meeting that we're able to review and prepare and be ready to ask those questions. And most come prepared with asking questions and other dialogue that's happened. And then many times those conversations bring up something else that someone didn't think about. And so it's, it's really a healthy working group, I think. And then the handbook in itself, we did meet and, and in these small groups that she's mentioning, but line by line, the tasks. And so this was not just a rubber stamp of what is it, it needs to serve a purpose. It's not just put on the shelf. It's, it's followed, it's used for guidance.
Yeah, thank you.
Offer a little bit more context.
A lot of edits, yeah. But then we'll get all the information before the meeting, like, just recently we had three class proposals. You guys approved one of them the last time was, was the officiating class, but that all comes before us. They have to follow the process and fill out, bring data, all of that. They get that usually four days before the meeting, maybe five, four or five days before the meeting. So they can look at it before we get there. And as a matter of fact, our members are pretty well engaged that even this time I had some not there and they said, but can you ask these questions for me? And so those were there so that we could ask. And then they vote on them. And sometimes you'll get one that maybe somebody says, you know, there's not enough votes for. And then I give them the feedback and say, here's what needs to be worked on or thought about. And you can bring it up again, or we can have a conversation, or sometimes, a lot of times, then they'll get moved on to you guys, but I always send them the feedback anyway. So it'll say this passed, but here are some things to think about, forward thinking. And that helps them too.
When we have staff that spend time on these committees, is that on a volunteer basis or are they compensated for that?
They do get paid to be involved.
Great. Okay. Yeah.
Not the parents though. They just show up.
Yeah, more dedicated.
That's right. Absolutely.
And I think that there are a lot of, a lot of educators that I speak to in districts across Kansas that know that this is really something that can be, when it's missing, it's really felt on the ground. And so, you know, just kudos to all of you guys for digging in and being so strategic, so methodical. Because you're right, Chilo, people across the state are looking for a way to come to the times that makes sense that, but so much of it depends on engaged educators and good leadership. So, and our families coming in and saying, this is what's important to us. I mean, all of those things really have to be present, but beautiful effort is evident here in this.
Thank you. And yeah, it's something that maybe I, just until I'm hearing you guys say to take for granted a little bit, not their hard work, but just the different perspectives. So even if I have a situation where I've, I've experienced something that I maybe liked or didn't like with my child, I'm bringing it to there, but it's all able to be good feedback to move forward as a system to with classes and wants and really thinking about the child. So it's definitely helped me grow.
You're seeking acceptance on it?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any of those same sign? Thank you for the hard work there.
Thank you.
You have the two hard ones.
Sorry, who was the second? Perry and then Rebecca, so I, I have a second one.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Add that along to our appreciation to the.
I'll put it as our good thing or, yeah, at the beginning.
Yeah, thank you. Those meetings started, everyone sharing some good things. I'll see what she's, she's. Okay, routine items.
Does it feel like a while since we had our legislative luncheon? It was a whole year ago. It does, it does feel a while. So, so those minutes are there. I didn't hear anything or have any questions on, on that. But just to show you, just an update on the first report, this is where, again, where we attract from a comparison perspective that I always like to draw your attention to. So again, these are, for me, it's, it's just a really good way to check side by side. So these are stuff right there. These are percent remaining of the, of the budgeting fund versus what These are percent remaining of the, of the budgeted fund versus what was expended. So we know we adjust our budgeted funds down. So even though, as I mentioned earlier, we don't yet know where our legal max is, this is still a good, I'd say dipstick checkpoint for us to look at compared, comparison. So we would ideally see pretty similar or potentially higher percentage right here in this column. This is this year. And then this is that same time of year back, looking back. So just from a 30,000-foot view essentially, and you can see there that your general, you were, you had 52% remaining last year and we have a little bit more and we have 54%. So that's a positive thing, especially on such a large fund. And in your LOB, you're pretty much riding the line with it. These ones here, as I pointed out before, you know, there's some of those are smaller funds that only have, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in them and they can fluctuate. So really from that point, we just look down to just kind of this bottom line. And you can see just overall total fund here, we are right in alignment with where we would hope to be. That's a very positive thing and we just continue to keep the pulse on it. We know we, you know, we, we know that we committed to the increased salaries, you know, all those things. So when you can be tracking at this point in, in the game and see that we're where we're at, that's a very positive thing. And it's a testament to working with our team to, to try to make sure we execute. And so that's where I'd leave us there as something that was posed. Then certainly as we start to get closer to the end of the year and we have a good idea of what our legal max is, then we'll start looking at, well, I will still present this information to you, but I'll keep you posted on kind of where we're tracking and where we're seeing kind of the landing point, so to speak. But this is just a really good checkpoint because it's really looking at apples and apples. So nothing really beyond that. I'm going to get on the right page here, except to say that we're, we're on target. Payment of bills, I didn't have any questions on those. I mean, those are standard for the month of December and ultimately approvals, what we're looking for, but.
Any questions on any of that?
I learned a lot going over the bills.
Good. Appreciate you.
Answered my questions very well, so.
Hey, something to share with you on that is, and thank you for doing that. And you'll, you'll see this, but when it is your time, if, if you didn't have a specific question, but you're just curious about our processes, let her know that or let me know that and I can connect her with you in a phone call or we can schedule a time because we appreciate if you've taken the time to do that. And I know each of you have done that in different ways, but if you just maybe don't have a specific question about a dollar amount, but you want to know how does this, you know, how do purchasing cards work, great opportunity to discuss.
I hope that that's still working. Maybe that's a good question, the rotation, because I think that helps us all be able to be more informed and then engage. Hopefully we're all looking at those and if we need to change that pattern, then let us know. Is it still working? I, I like this process that they have in sharing. What was it before, before we started kind of doing it like this? How did it go before? So the board officers were looking at them specifically.
That's a.
Not that everybody on the board couldn't or didn't, shouldn't have been.
Oh, right.
But it was responsibility. But that was put on the board officers, yeah. I, I am pleased with this process, shared responsibility and learning.
I'm not an accountant, but it seems confusing that you have all the bills for the special ed co-op in with us. It just causes you to rethink what's really, we're responsible for. I mean, I realize we're responsible for both of them, but it's a different level of responsibility. And how that's delineated in the report is not very clear to me. And that was part of my problem. That's what I learned.
Is there a reason that it needs to be like that? Is it our software? Is it the way that it generates and spits it out? Yeah. To delineate it out would mean we'd have to be too separate or, you know, we are, but we're not.
And the reality is that's the, the better part, or the second part is the most important part is that we're actually not. So it's, you know, fund 78, and I'll draw our attention to fund 78 very often, but that's the reality is you, you, we house that co-op. But yeah, but, but once you, once you know that and you can see what you're looking for, then you get done.
Well, the question I ask is why do we have so many bills for my leads when we got all these vehicles sitting out here?
Right.
Well, it's because of the special ed co-op took those beat. I didn't know that. So it was good education for me.
Exactly. Perfect.
Okay, we need a motion.
Throw out.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Yes, thank you. Good. Okay, future meetings, suggested items.
Strategic planning will be a highly important one. And then long-range facility planning, obviously as well. So just as a reminder for this group, last board meeting you took action, our facility committee hasn't been able to meet because last week was impacted by, well, really the first two days of the week were impacted by weather, which impact kind of snowballed, unintended statement there, the rest of it. But we are moving along with partner VCS, that's, that is moving along. And so an update related to that, just in addition to conversations around longer-term planning, will be coming forward from that group. So that, that long-range facility planning is a little bit multifaceted, but those are the key items there. And then just looking ahead, upcoming, oh, something I want to draw your attention to just on our announcements, and this is a testament to Mrs. Strathman and the team at the co-op. And we'll be able to update you after that. But for the last few years, our McPherson County Special Education Co-op, the superintendents of each of the five districts have been wanting to try to pull together countywide, really, Emily said that Melissa Strathman as well engaged in that conversation, try to find a way to bring a countywide professional element related to, to just special education and all the ways that it can impact us. And so this year will mark our first time doing that on February 17th. And so that'll be just a really cool professional element opportunity. And we appreciate Mrs. Strathman and the team for working on that because all county schools will be here in McPherson in addition to all of our staff working for that day related to just professional element. So February 17th, and then you can see those other items up there. It's a little bit odd when it's freezing out to map things out to spring break, but there you have it. Warm weather is ahead. Come, it's not here yet.
I was waiting until our regular show this committee meeting in February or I'm going to try to squeeze it in, but so.
We will be reaching out, I will be reaching out to that group, posing that question. It's very, I will say, it's currently looking difficult, but I'll send out just for facility group, his questions related to, are we going to, are we going to do that? We will absolutely have on prior to our next board meeting.
Okay, committee. So we have two executive sessions into, everyone ready or do we need a break? Are we going to go back to back? Go ahead, you want a break?
Five minute break.
Okay, we need a motion for that. Yeah. Need a motion for that.
Oh.
A motion for a break.
Five minute session.
We fasten that. I guess we don't need officially vote on that.
We need all three.
Many calls this time of year, Jeff. Getting many calls.
I will.
You mean the verbiage that's on?
Yeah. Oh, gosh. I don't think... Are they in the same line, right?
Yeah, I don't...
She's sensitive. It does impact...
Just the calculation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And a motion to go into executive session to discuss proposals being considered in contract negotiations with teachers pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at 7:15. The executive session will include the board, superintendent, assistant superintendent, executive director of special education. Need a second. Second. On the papers, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
We should have that following.
Sorry, blow that one all the way first. We don't have smashing fingers.
That was a hard copy. I know how to do it.
You can teach him. We are... Okay, we're gonna go back into executive sessions. So, and when we do that, Sheri Sparks has been able to join us by phone. And so, the motion is to go into an executive session to discuss proposals being considered in contract negotiations with teachers pursuant to exception for employer-employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in the boardroom for another 15 minutes. These... I can't see the...
7:31.
Okay, 7:31. The executive session will include the board, superintendent, assistant superintendent, executive director of special education. A second. Sarah. Rebecca. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Sheri, did we hear you? Thank you. That was very... Thank you.
I do want you all to know, I've tried to make sure that the air conditioning is set, but it's a weird thing to try to do when it's so cold out. So the 76 degrees that the thermostat says, I promise it's not too cold.
Can I call back in just a minute?
Did she join?
Yes. Yes, and when you do...
Is there a call now?
Yeah, I'll text you. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
The board needs to meet.
Rebecca. And she, so I won't...
Have her call there.
I will text her.
Well, it's good. He's talking to somebody else.
Can I just have her?
Me or me?
Yeah.
Me or me?
Me or you? Nice time you got on yours. Are you fully charged?
Uh, 50% battery.
Okay, good. You got me. How about you?
I was on the seat here, so...
I texted her.
Fully charged.
Yeah, to see.
Oh, personnel isn't...
I'd go 30.
I did a copy.
I don't think I heard back from anybody.
Let me strike those. Yeah. One line.
Okay. Motion to go into executive session to discuss an individual employee pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at, it's going to take 30 minutes. 8:03? 8:03, thank you. The executive session will include the board. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign?
It's 40 seconds.
I got one.
It's...
We'll get through.
It's gonna have three spots. I'm gonna switch to at least four, Brian. Yep.
Motion to go into executive session to discuss an individual employee pursuant to... Motion to go into executive session to discuss an individual employee pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in the board room for 15 more minutes, which...
Eight twenty.
Thank you. Eight twenty. The executive session will include the board. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed, same sign. That's for pool further.
I haven't thought of it. I was thinking of it. He did the same thing to the table.
It's actually not that bad. I didn't know you were from the door. I'm like, who'd be in this sliding?
He said every time he opened the sliding doors, it would hit that flame.
Yeah. You're live?
We are live. You are ready.
Perfect. Motion to go into executive session to discuss an individual employee pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in the board room. You're gonna use thirty minutes, so whatever.
Eight fifty-one.
Thank you. Eight fifty-one. The executive session will include the board and superintendent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Make it Sherry. Did you say aye, Sherry?
Yes, but I'm muted, so...
Okay. Any opposed?
I'll tell what is.
Thirty minutes, whatever.
Fifty-three?
Thank you. Thirty minutes, fifty-three. Thank you.
I know this is important.
Yeah, it's important.
Certainly. We'll check.
Okay.
I've had it.
I was 15 seconds quicker. Started mine too fast.
Jeff must have had to run. Go ahead and take your vote if you need to use restroom before like.
Yes.
Because if anything we come out. Okay, great. Cool. It's still still dinner. Somebody gave one.
No, I did not eat that. It's an actual question. Remember I'm losing.
I mean, this is important.
Yeah, it's important.
Certainly.
I've had it.
I was 15 seconds quicker. Started mine too fast.
Jeff must have had to run. Go ahead and take your vote if you need to use restroom before like.
Yes.
Because if anything we come out. Okay, great. Cool. It's still still dinner. Somebody gave one.
No, I did not eat that. It's an actual question. Remember I'm losing.
You know, I wanted to be sorry. Where are we going?
Well, we'll step back just to make it get into cooler climate.
Because it's 100 degrees in here.
It is 80.
Yeah, 80 now. Oh my gosh.
Okay. All we need is.
Motion to amend the executive session to be take place in the North Conference Room due to the heat in the courtroom.
So it's fine to do that, but okay. The motion, because I hadn't clicked off the thing, we'll just just for the sake of it, redo the whole.
Okay, I did not know. Okay. Motion to go into executive session to discuss individual employee pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume.
9:27.
In the North Conference Room. Over 30 minutes.
9:27.
9:27. The executive session will include the board of superintendent. Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, boys.
I know I wanted to be sorry. Where are we going?
We'll step back just to make it get into cooler climate.
Because it's 100 degrees in here.
It is 80.
Yeah, 80 now. Oh my gosh.
Okay. All we need is.
Motion to amend the executive session to be take place in the North Conference Room due to the heat in the courtroom.
So it's fine to do that, but okay. The motion, because I hadn't clicked off the thing, we'll just just for the sake of it, redo the whole.
Okay, I did not know. Okay. Motion to go into executive session to discuss individual employee pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume.
9:27.
In the North Conference Room. Over 30 minutes. What was the time?
9:27.
9:27. The executive session will include the board of superintendent. Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, boys.
You know, I wanted to be sorry.
Uh-huh.
Where are we going?
Well, we'll step back, just to make it get into a cooler climate.
Because it's 100 degrees in here.
It is 80.
Yeah, 80 now. Oh, my gosh.
Okay. All we need is, you know, well, yeah.
Motion to amend the executive session to be take place in the North Conference Room due to the heat in the boardroom.
So we're trying to do that, but, okay, that's fine.
Change the time.
Motion, because I hadn't clicked off the thing, we'll just, just for the sake of it, redo the whole.
Okay, I did not, okay, thank you. Motion to go into executive session to discuss an individual employee pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume.
9:27.
In the North Conference Room, over 30 minutes. What was the time?
9:27.
9:27. The executive session will include the board and superintendent. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, boys. Sorry about that, boys.
Oh, thank you.